Everybody ready? Okay, the Monday, June 4th, 2012 city council meeting, City Mercer Way will come to order. Ally, could you call a roll?
Sure. It's been awhile. Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Who's up?
Here. Councilmember Jane Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Thero.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Grady.
Yeah.
Councilmember Tana Senn.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Gross. Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. Thank you for that. Okay, first item of business will be an introduction.
Um, thank you. Uh, council, I want, I know informally you've vetted, but I want to more formally introduce to you Scott Snyder, sitting in between Ally and Noel. Uh, Scott serving as our city attorney during Katie's absence, um, her, um, taking care of her mom who is ill. Um, so you'll see Scott for council meetings through the summer, and he's gonna put in a limited number of hours with the staff during the work week as we have issues to deal with. Uh, Scott comes from the firm of Ogden Murphy Wallace, which specializes in municipal law, and he's been doing, he practicing twenty-five...
You're nice, thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Yeah, well, it's the hair. Um, and at one time was, uh, when Katie was working at the firm, he was, uh, her boss. So, uh, we're lucky to have him, and, uh, lucky he said yes to fill in for us. So, welcome.
Thanks, Rich, and welcome, Scott. And I guess, uh, it's not quite an introduction any longer, but Noel's now officially on board with us, and so welcome Noel.
He showed up for his second week, so it's a good sign.
Yeah, he didn't run. Didn't run screaming from the building yet, so. Okay, uh, we move to public appearances, and, uh, yeah, it's been a little thin here. Bob, did you want to, uh... Um, I don't need to state the rules, I guess, I can just close public, because we have no one who's interested in speaking, I'm gonna go ahead and open, and then immediately close public appearances, so public appearances are closed. With that, we, let's see, um, a change to the agenda, we will have an executive session at the end of the meeting, uh, we'll talk more about that when we reach that point.
You might wanna go ahead and make the site now.
Okay. We debated about that?
Oh.
I don't have the language here, so...
My printer isn't working, so I couldn't get it to him. But it is RCW 4230-1101B, and that's to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we move to minutes, and we have the revised regular meeting minutes of the May 7, 2012 meeting. Move to approve the revised minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been revised already, so I'm guessing we're probably good at this point. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Very good, minutes are done. Consent calendar. We have payables, payroll, and two agenda bills on the consent calendar tonight. Um, should I have a motion for approving the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the payable, if we take that off?
Very well. Anything else? Alright, so the motion would be to approve the consent calendar consisting of payroll, Agenda Bill 4744, and Agenda Bill 4741. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, that carries, so now payables. Mike?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I have a question on Set 1, page 14, Set 1, page 14. Uh, Mr. City Manager, that whole Marine Patrol account, P02200, looks like, uh, almost double entries with the mileage expense, which also seems kinda high. Um, and I guess per D M, it looks like we went to three different, uh, or went, three officers went to the same class.
Chief, can you answer that for us?
I can. Ed Holmes, your police chief for the record. There was an error made in this, um, accounting that's been corrected. Checks were never sent out to Wave Electrical, that was an error, so that was caught before checks were sent out. And on the mileage for, uh, this hotel reimbursement, our sergeant who trains other patrol, uh, marine officers in the state, that is all reimbursed by State Park. So his, all those expenses you see there for training in Kennewick, uh, mileage expenses, not the ones to Wave Electric, 'cause that's where, those were voided, but the other ones are reimbursed.
Just for curiosity, 270 is a lot of dollars, a lot of money for mileage expense. Was that out of state we traveled to?
It was probably to Kennewick.
It's more than mileage. Oh, oh, you mean that, uh, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the per diem.
Yeah, I would guess that's to Kennewick. I know he trained in, I think it was Ellensburg and Kennewick, so it was a, um, a two training classes he went to, so that would probably capture multiple trips, but all that stuff is being reimbursed by the state.
Okay, thank you, Chief. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mike, did you wanna make a motion, then?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve Payables 517-2012.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Then that brings us to regular business, Agenda Bill 4742, 2012 residential street overlays, authorization to bid. Clint?
I'm Clint Morris, your street engineer. I can either give a short description of the project, or we can go right to questions, your choice.
I'll make a motion, I'd like to make, I'll make the motion.
Boy, Mike is itching, you got something going on tonight. Um, okay, if you guys are, if you guys are good with it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the proposed 2012 residential street overlay and P D, PBF improvements design as presented in this report, and authorize city manager to advertise for construction bids.
I'll second, as long as I can ask a couple of questions.
Oh, you can absolutely ask a couple of questions. Okay, so, Mike, go ahead with, uh, you wanna, oh, well, you made the motion, you get first dibs on, uh, statements, but then we will come to, uh, Mike Grady's question.
Right. Uh, I would like to commend the staff on their use of the pavement condition index, and I think that's a great tool that we have, and I'm glad to see that it's, uh, a front forward in this presentation as justifying residential street overlays, recognizing fully that it's not simply the PCI that we base those decisions on, but it's a important tool that we're using, and it's important for the council to understand that also, so I'm very happy to see that, how that's used in this. That's all I have.
Thanks for saying that.
You're welcome.
Yeah? Okay, uh, Mike Grady?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clint, a couple of questions, um, and probably some comments interspersed between these. Um, the new pavement that you're gonna add, remember, uh, a while back we talked about porous pavement? Have you since explored the use of that for shoulders? And have you considered that for this particular project?
I, I briefly considered it for this project, but it's, it is difficult to place, uh, a porous asphalt on a narrow strip, and then be overlaying the rest of the road with a different product. It makes the most sense economically to do your overlay full width with one pavement grade. Now, we are looking at another small project this summer that is some sidewalk work that we may use pervious asphalt, because it's a standalone sidewalk.
Yeah, um, you know, you might also wanna talk to Isiqua, 'cause they've done that, and have been able to reduce some of the cost, but, um, I'll reconnect with you when we get to that point and see, in addition, if we can't get some additional grant money to use that as part of an LID kinda project. Um, the other comment and question I have is, I'm, I'm very pleased to see you're gonna put share markings on the web.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in deference to my colleague on the, on my far right, um, as opposed to putting it every 250 feet, have you considered a longer interval, like, you know, 750 to 1,000 feet?
We looked at a couple of other agencies, uh, Isiqua, and Bellevue, and Seattle, and this spacing kinda fits with what they're doing.
Hmm.
So we're trying to, to be comparable to other jurisdictions at, at 700 or 800 feet. I'm not sure if that's enough, but then again, we're new at this, so...
Yeah, just, just a comment based on some experience, you might wanna tend toward above 500 as opposed to 250, but...
Alright, we, we have not, uh, decided exactly where they go, and exactly the spacing yet.
Okay. And then the last comment, I note, uh, you're considering no parking in some of the areas there, um, so I'm assuming that decision will be based on previous discussions we've had here about the Mercer Ways and that kinda thing. So you guys are comfortable moving forward without having to come back to us and ask...
Right, I'm, I'd like to, to do kind of a wait-and-see approach to that. If we get some parking problems where they are blocking the new paved shoulders, then we will address that.
Okay. But you don't see a need to come back to us to have that discussion?
I don't think so. I think it would be a very limited number of signs.
Okay. Good, thank you, good luck.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, um, I'll ask this as a question, we talked about it just before, but, uh, the stretch of 90th north of 47th, um, is a little bit ambiguous, because you say in your text that you're intending to pave it, but you don't show it on the map as paved.
Yes, I apologize, I did not update my map. It, if you go to your map, you should see a red line that goes from 47th up to Ellis Pond. I would like to include that little, um, short piece of 90th that provides an additional uh, head bike route via the Ellis Pond Trail that gives you, uh, another north-south option.
Good, thank you. Okay, if no other questions, just come back for comments, then, or discussion.
I just had a quick question, um, is there any chance this project could be done before school starts?
We will try. My larger concern is that I get Island Crest Way paved before school starts.
Thank you. Okay? Alright, Tana?
Uh, I just wanted to say that this is very exciting to have this, um, bike path connecting to the new section by the mailboxes coming out of 90th, and, uh, I hope that once it is finished, that we, as a city, really highlight, um, hopefully both through the local media and in other ways to, um, to really highlight this new, this new path, so that it gets increased use, um, because I think it's a wonderful, safe corridor that we're building, so thank you.
Great. Other comments or discussion? Carrie?
You know, I have a comment that I want to mention, because I think it was, uh, Council member Gross, he thought that he sensed that we can't get that signature, at least proportionally from the Shida, came to the former school service, because I think there was a concern that we were going into issues with parks in this work, or, or, it's not just that Island Crest Way, and that left, and Shida were, um, very challenging to the topic. So, because anything that we could do to make sure, and I'm finding that we're enabling both Island Park and the Shida, or, as soon as the school decides, it's gonna probably be faster than changing sports, that's actually true. But, um, what happens if that aren't addressed?
Yes.
In September?
We will try, however, I want to avoid having both of them, uh, heavily under construction at the same time.
Absolutely.
And the comment I'll make is that having actually walked around the area a bit with, with Clint and Ann, and stared at it a bit myself, I think what we've arrived at is that for the bike bikers and walkers, 88th, 89th, and 90th all represent viable routes for people to be traveling, and the traffic is highest on 88th, you know, midline on 89th, and lowest on 90th. And so by directing folks to 90th, uh, by perhaps improving the trail at Ellis Pond enough so that bikes can go through there easily, it's already been improved enough that they can go through there pretty easily, um, we'll make that a, a great option for people, but all three of those will remain options, and all three of them will get used, I think, and that's, that's good, uh, from a standpoint of having people have flexibility. Okay, you have another comment?
Yeah, I guess my last comment would be, um, right at 47th and Island Crest Way, currently it's a very, you have to make a, pretty much of a ninety-degree angle turn to start to go up 47th from Island Crest Way if you're a pedestrian on your bike, um, is that gonna be kind of more of a connected, so that when you're turning, you don't have to go into the street to turn left, but that the sidewalk allows you to go, um, up along the edge?
Are you referring to the piece immediately east of Island Crest Way?
Yes.
Between Island Crest and 88th?
Yes.
As part of the Island Crest Way project, that gets a new sidewalk.
Okay.
Between Island Crest and 88th.
Great.
So you will have...
It'll be smooth, flowing?
Yes, you'll have concrete sidewalk with curb and gutter to separate pedestrians from cars.
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other, all in favor of, get back to the motion, approving the proposed 2012 residential street overlay and PBF improvements design as presented in this report, and authorize the city manager to advertise for construction bid, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, uh, carries? Surprised me on that, Mike.
Well, I, I, I just couldn't, it's that Island Crest thing, but we, I didn't need to talk about it anymore.
You like PCI, for that?
Yeah.
Partly...
PCI's good, step forward. Alright, we move on to Agenda Bill 4740, East Cove Final Long Plat Approval. For that, we have...
Shannon.
Shannon. And you said this has been four years in the making?
It has been, um, so...
That's a saga.
Yeah, most definitely. Um, I'm Shannon Crick, planner with the city, good evening. Um, so, tonight I am bringing to you the, uh, final approval for the East Cove, East Cove Long Plat. And typically, we get applications for long plats every three to five years, so this is kind of a rare occurrence. The last one we got, uh, that we had was the Sunset Ridge Long Plat, and that was approved in January of 2008, so shortly before I actually got this application. And just for some context, the, the long plat is located off of East Mercer Way, it's on the south part of the island, very close to Pioneer Park. Long plat approval is a two-step process, um, during the preliminary stage, which we've already completed, the planning commission will hold a public hearing, and then they make a recommendation to the city council. And the city council is the decision authority, and the, the city council granted preliminary approval on this plat. And final approval, that's what we're doing now, um, so final plats go directly to the city council for approval. According to state law, the long plat must be approved if it conforms to all conditions of preliminary plat approval, and you have those in Exhibit 2 at the very end of the This is a brief timeline of the review process for this particular plat. So we received the plat in September of 2008, um, it, a public hearing was held in July of 2009, and it was granted preliminary approval by the city council in November of 2009. Preliminary approval is actually good for five years, so we're a little ahead of schedule, and, um, the applicant submitted an application for final approval on December 6, 2011.
Those, those two dates don't make sense, do they? Those first two?
Um, there were, there were a lot of corrections requested of the applicant, so it spent a lot of time in their court.
Yeah, but I would think that plat applic, oh, I'm sorry, 2008.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Shannon, go back to there again.
Sure.
You, when you were first, you said it took four years, this is four years in the making, kinda gave me a bit of concern. So, um, what are our timeline benchmarks or standards for doing this process for those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, for those six gates right there? Or, or, did we hit them? Did we hit our, our time?
We did, actually. Um, as, as I stated, the applicant, um, there were several rounds of corrections, and a lot of the time that you see built into this is dedicated to completing the site development. They are required, required to complete all site development before they can submit for final approval.
You see that two-year period between November 09 and November 2011, that's the developer going out and actually putting in the utilities and the streets, and then they, when they're done, they come back to us and say, "Have we done it according to the permit?" And we say, "Yes," in that case, "on November 30th, we approved the, uh, the plans." And then they submit the final plat application, and that's the document that can be recorded with the county.
Correct.
For final land division, uh, back last December, and now you get to make the final decision.
At the time of preliminary review, um, there were a few comments from the neighbors, uh, specifically the neighbors immediately to the north. One addressed potentially hazardous trees on the site. The neighbor was concerned that the trees would fall on his house, and those trees were removed by, um, within the trees allowed under permit 1005095, which was filed on October 21st, 2011. Uh, there was also a water pump in the lake that another resident was concerned about because it blocked the entrance to their dock, or made ingress egress very difficult, and the owner removed the water pump, so that's also gone.
Excuse me, what was the water pump for?
It wasn't actually in use anymore, so it was just a piece of equipment sitting in the lake, and I suppose the owner actually, or the representative for the owner just walked in, so he might be able to speak to that a little better than I can, so...
If you care to be on the spot and answer a question? Come on up, come on up to the podium if you would.
Is it an irrigation device?
Hi, I'm Charlie Adams.
If you could just, if you could just state your name and address for the record as you began, and Ally, you got the microphone on for him there? Okay.
I'm Charlie Adams, Seattle, Washington.
Okay.
Is that adequate? It's just that, oh, it was an old abandoned irrigation pump. I don't think it'd been used in ten, fifteen years.
Oh, okay.
Just a guess.
Okay, good. Because my next question would have been if you had a water right to irrigate the water from the lake.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
And what we're looking at now is the plat configuration that was granted preliminary approval, um, the sort of teal-colored polygons represent the building pads, the, uh, the dark gray is the road, and that dark blue color, those are areas where the grade of the lot exceeds forty percent, so that meets the definition of steep slope under the code. And, um, if you're wondering, building pads are essentially what's left over on the lot when you take out setbacks and critical areas, any place where you can't locate a structure. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's where the entire house is going to be, so... And this is the plat configuration that is coming to you for final approval. The only difference in the plat, you'll notice the northwest corner of Lot 3, looks like there's a little bite taken out of it, uh, that was to accommodate a city-requested utility easement. And this is...
What does that mean? Um, a city-requested utility easement? Is there a transaction there?
There was an agreement recorded between the owner and the city allowing for a utility line to go there, and you can't, unless it's within the agreement, you can't put structures on top of the utility line, so...
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure there was an agreement. I'm wondering what the agreement was, people don't normally, I mean, the city has taken something away from this, this property owner, so what is the city giving the property owner?
He said...
Yeah, it's, it's very common, in fact, um, happens in every land subdivision where there will be easements for various public activities, like streets and utilities. So, uh, it's just a condition of subdivision approval. If these were legally platted lots already, and then we came in and sought a utility easement, that's when you get into the condition where there would be a negotiation, a discussion, and there might be some sort of quid pro quo. But in the land subdivision process, this is what you do in land subdivision.
So this utility is necessary for the five additional homes, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I don't know, is that the case?
Yeah, is it stormwater, or is it the water main that's described in the, the...
I correct for the record, George, stand, you're a principal planner, so I talked to the applicant real quick, and was looking at the utility plans that is included, and I looked at there's a water line that goes through there, and I'm talking with the applicant, that's probably the least expensive way for him to get that, or the less expensive way to get that water line through there, so, because there's a city water line, or a water line through there, um, obviously there's an easement on there. But it was in conjunction with the applicant who's here to talk about it, I mean, the city works with him, find the best way to do this.
That's true.
Uh, question, is the road, um, a private road or public road?
It's a private road.
Private road?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think our city attorney has...
Uh, you know, the, uh, part of the standard compensation to the property owner on dedication is the city takes over maintenance of the utilities, so that's, that's what the, uh, the developer gets from the dedication of the public easement. Other questions? So, uh, yeah, we'll talk at the end here.
Right.
Okay, so other questions? Mike?
Well, go ahead, and then I'll ask when you're finished.
No, you said you're done, right?
Oh, I'm, yes, I'm finished. This is, the staff recommendation is cited in the agenda bill.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your presentation and, uh, all the information in the packet. Um, can you tell me to what extent the plans comport with the Shoreline Master Program in terms of, um, the shoreline amenities that have been provided? And specifically, I know in one of the diagrams, it shows a rock wall right at the shoreline, is that an existing structure or a proposed structure?
That is an existing structure.
Okay. George, are there any plans to modify and enhance that structure, or can you speak to me a little bit about what's gonna happen with the 50 feet from the ordinary high watermark?
So, clearly under the, the code, there isn't a requirement that he modifies the existing structures that are in there, um, and so he just has to show that everything is in compliance with the, all the other applicable regulations. Was there a dock that was removed as part of that?
A dock was removed.
Yes. And then, so as far as the existing rock structure that's there, um, there's no plans to remove that, and it's not a condition under the current shoreline master program of the city to remove that as part of the subdivision.
So which, uh, version of the shoreline master program does this plat comport with? The existing, or the seem to be hopefully approved?
Can you pull up that timeline, Shannon? So, when the applicant applied, he was under the, he was vested under the existing S and P.
So the old one?
Correct, the existing one, yes.
Okay. That's too bad, 'cause this is brand-new shoreline, and we're gonna keep a rock wall there with no enhancements.
I think there was a lot of discussion, you know, I know it was a while ago, and if I recall correctly, there was a lot of discussion that went on about, um, the width and lot depth, if you recall that, and how many lots would be on there, and I think eventually council said, "Okay, we're gonna approve this preliminary plat," and I think there was some electance on council understanding on that, but given that preliminary approval was approved on that, we're, we're, the applicants vested under those regulations, yeah.
I know, this is a problem we have in the state. Um, I'll make comments on that later. Uh, question on the stormwater treatment, uh, it's not clear, um, who is gonna be responsible for, um, maintenance and treatment for stormwater, can you speak to that, either Shannon or George?
I wish we had Patrick Yamash, our city engineer here, he's, um, had to take the night off, I'll leave that up to the applicant to describe that, um, and then come back if he's, if he's... And I can come back if he's, if he's not answering that fully. I have some speculation on that, but I try to avoid the technical engineering questions if I can, but I'll wing it when I need to.
Okay. And the last question I have speaks to the issue of, it sounds like there's a bald eagle management plan that's been filed back in 2009. Do we have anyone here that can address that issue?
Go ahead, Shannon.
Um, there was, yes, there was a management plan that was filed in 2009. And they've been working with Kathy Parker and Department of Fish and Wildlife to comply with that, so.
So what are they complying with? Do we have an active nest on this site?
Um, at, you know, at this point, I'm not entirely certain. The management plan, I believe, was included as an exhibit in the preliminary packet.
Right, Exhibit 12.
Right.
I believe there's a requirement that they have to comply with all state and federal requirements as well. My understanding is that's, management plan, as you know, is implemented through state regulation and requirements. So Kathy will be working with them to make sure they meet those requirements.
Well, it would be interesting to know that before you ask me to vote on final approval, because if, this has not been finalized?
They're, they're coming in for final approval now.
Do you have more details on this in terms of buffer, width, and that kind of thing?
Oh, I'm sorry, that, we're talking about the plat itself. They're coming in for final approval on the plat right now. We can ask the applicant where he is on the stage of the, on that management plan.
Yeah, I would like to know that.
Charlie Adams, Seattle, Washington. The eagle management plan was filed initially for the preliminary plat approval.
Right.
It's absolutely approved in any place where there is no eagle nest on site. The nearest eagle nest is, I believe, seven-eighths of a mile away.
Uphill?
Uphill, yeah.
South, southeast of your property?
Yeah, up toward the park there. But the only, the main requirements on our eagle management plan is we have some designated roosting trees within 200 feet of the water of the lake. So we're maintaining those.
So what are the buffer requirements for no touching for those particular trees? And where are they identified in the plat? And I'm, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but you know, I heard earlier that somebody was complaining about the danger of trees falling on their property, and then someone went ahead and cut trees down, so.
Well, we can't touch any trees on site without notifying Fish and Wildlife first. And it's not until we have approval from Lynn and Kathy Parker that we can cut trees, especially during the development process. The trees, there are some designated trees on, yeah, I'm sure Shannon can find it. But all the trees are within the 200-foot buffer, within 200 feet of the lake, and-
So within 200 feet of ordinary high water?
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure if it's ordinary high water or whatever, but, and then, and it's pretty cut and dry.
About 250. Actually, is it Shannon? If you scroll back up to the first paragraph, I think it speaks to the buffer width from ordinary high water of 200?
250, yeah.
Okay. So the trees that you referred to earlier were not within this zone that posed a hazard to the neighbors?
Correct, they were outside. I can actually, I have a map, I can show you.
Okay. Okay, so we've, we've tagged these in our GIS maps and understand that it's a no-touch zone within 250 feet?
We already have the buffer layer within our, our GIS maps. And also, we have specific eagles nests marked as well. And I'm sorry, I do concur with Mr. Adams. There is no eagle nest on site. I just kind of got a little flustered, so.
Well, you know, let me just, let me pose a question, because there are other sites on the island, and we've had developers come in with building permits and have been granted exemptions to those permits. So that's why I'm curious about early comments on cutting trees down and the caution for moving forward, knowing that we've got potential roosting within this area here. Shannon's got a map up there now, so maybe, can you talk us through what, what you're showing now?
Yes. So as you can see, these are the lot, oh, sorry, this is Mr. Yusefian's lot. These are the lots, let's see if I can, well, in this, stop. Okay. Down here, these are lots four and five. And so these are the areas within the protective buffer, which I can pull back up. There's actually an illustration in the eagle management plan. And the trees themselves are outside, so let me-
So the two green circles represent the two trees that were of concern to the neighbors to the north?
Correct. And both trees were deemed hazardous by an arborist, so my understanding is that they would be allowed to be removed anyway.
And Kathy Parker was involved in that?
Yes, yes.
All right.
And there was an outside arborist on the applicant's side as well.
Okay, Shannon, last question. Can you point to where the stormwater outflow would be located and whether there's any treatment of the stormwater before it discharges into Lake Washington?
And once again, I, we would have loved to have Patrick here this evening. Can't speak to that, but perhaps the applicant could.
Charlie Adams, Seattle, Washington. The, you can just barely see the, the old dock on the property. That dock has been removed, but, oh. There you go. So that dock has been removed. Just to the left of that dock, just to the left, right in there, is where the outflow is.
Currently or proposed?
Currently. It's all complete, it's all been installed. All the work on site is 100% done. It's a 12-inch outflow.
And so it then gathers all of the stormwater from the property?
From the road.
From the road.
From the road only, in the hammerhead turnaround. The stormwater that drains from the road goes through four separate filters, or there's four catch basins on the road. No, I'm sorry, there's three. There's three catch basins on the road. Each catch basin is its own, has its own microfilter system within it. So each one of those catch basins are essentially a small filter treatment plant. Once the water passes through those, then it goes to a discharge side of the system and is allowed to go down.
Do you know what kind of filter system?
I don't remember the manufacturer's name, sorry.
Okay, last question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the indulgence. The last question is, so it's my understanding you've removed an old dock. What are the plans for constructing future overwater structures, like docks? Okay, second.
Right now, we have permit approval to install two new docks, one for each lot. They're much smaller in footprint size than the old existing dock. You can see how large it was.
Do you know what the total square footage will be with the two compared to the previous?
I don't know the exact figures, but I could say that the two added together would be no more than 70% of the existing. And I honestly, I believe it's less than that. Because the grade, the grading, the dock, the dock surface is porous and allows light through.
For the new ones?
Yeah.
Did you go through any additional permitting with the state or feds on those docks or just through-
Yeah, we've been in the premise process, premise process on that with the state and feds for almost two years.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you. Okay, other questions? I think we're on questions still. Debbie Tona?
I was just going to ask, on when, when building commences on the actual lots, are these sites grandfathered in on the old shoreline management plan? Or would, because it's beginning building while this is plating, would that apply to the new one? Or is it constantly grandfathered in based on application?
It depends on when we actually receive the applications. If they submit and their applications are deemed complete under the current regulations, they'll be vested under these. If it happens to fall, when the new regulations are adopted, they will be vested under those.
This whole notion of vesting is, in the whole land development business, is sort of a very fundamental principle. You vest in the regulatory framework that's in place on the day, I'm going to, if I get this wrong, Scott, you tell me, on the day that the city accepts your application for development. So you can make application, but if you, if the city doesn't accept it because you haven't submitted certain information and all, then the date doesn't start. But once the city accepts the application, the laws on the books at the time are the laws that you have to live with. Did I get that right, Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, the word of art is a complete, but you've got the thought set correct.
Yes, sir. And so, as you know, we haven't finished our shoreline master program process for the new one. And when we do, and the council adopts that, any development application that comes in that is complete and we accept is subject to that.
Okay, other questions? Jane, Mike? No? All right. Looking for a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to operate as mayor to sign the final plat, plat map for the East Cove Long plat as depicted by Exhibit 1 to Agenda Bill 4740.
Second.
Jane gets the win on that. All right, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just say something real quickly about it.
Please do.
I am real excited about this project because of the single-family residency contribution it makes to the island. One of the strengths that I see on this island that supports our parks, our schools, our community in general, is the very, very high rate of single-family housing that we have on the island, which is about 78%. Kirkland, Renton, for example, they're, they're closer to 52%. That's almost 25-point different. And I truly believe that the, the burden that single-family residences give to the island, to the city services, is far exceeded by the amount of revenue that they contribute to our coffers. So I'm real excited to see this project. I also would like the, the council to take note on what the market is bearing on this property. The market is bearing, uh, single-family lots, single-family residences on this undeveloped property. And why do I bring that up? Because of the First Hill property. If we deviate anything from single-family lots similar to what is being promoted here on the market, then that's going to, that's going to come at a cost to the citizens of the island on what we're going to be able to get from that, from, from that piece of property at First Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, discussion? Mike?
Yeah, you may add board in on the environmental issues for some of these reasons, because it really points out the problem that we have when we're talking about upgrading our shoreline master program or growth management plans from critical areas all the way through fish and wildlife, fish and wildlife protection. We can't get to know net loss in our shoreline master program. And I've talked frequently about this. And particularly when we have new property like this, where we have an opportunity to do much more and to provide more habitat to offset the habitat that we're losing, when we constantly replace in-kind existing structures. However, given that, I'm impressed with the pursuance of state and federal permitting with the overwater structures. That's very helpful. But I'm disappointed that, you know, we can't remove rock wall structures, we can't design green shorelines, we can't find better ways to, you know, treat the water that's coming off the property. So given that, I'm still struggling with how to vote, how to vote on this. But I, I wanted to point out, you know, as we move into the fall and we talk once again about the shoreline master program, I would like the council, my council members to remember that when we have the discussion about mitigating existing impacts, we really don't do that because we can't do it in our city parks, because that's pretty much already been done. And we have free and easy access by the public. But when we have new properties like this, this is a prime opportunity we have to, you know, do the best that we possibly can for the habitat. And we've done some of that, but not near enough, quite frankly. So that's my comment based on looking it over for the third time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we, please signify by saying aye to motion to authorize the mayor to sign the final plat map for the East Cove Long plat as depicted by Exhibit 1 to Agenda Bill, Agenda Bill 4740, if you agree with motion. Watch that. So, that was a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, Mike, you've made your decision, so. Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, Shannon. And thank you, Charlie. Appreciate your coming and being ready with answers to a lot of, a lot of the questions. And Mike, thank you. It was interesting to hear your digging into parts of that that I was not capable of digging into, so that was good. Okay, that brings us to Agenda Bill 4739, lease purchase financing of one velocity pumper fire truck. Chip?
Good evening. For the record, Chip Cordy, the finance director, along with Steve Heitman, your deputy fire chief. I can try to tee this up, so a lot of you are new to fire truck purchasing and kind of recovers what's in the agenda bill, or I can just take questions right out of the gate, your choice. So- Yeah, given you- Given Mike's confusion is, I looked at this and the timelines on all this, I think at the very least, I'd like to have you spend a bit of time on that spreadsheet explaining how it, how it all fits together and, and how that gets us to where we are today. And so the spreadsheet that the mayor's referring to is the transition, it's Exhibit 2, transition from four to three maxi pumpers. So little color-coded spreadsheets. And at first pass, I was confused by this and ended up trying to put my own together and, and then, once I was walked through it, it made a lot more sense to me. Ally's just going to bring it up. Okay. Chip, I don't mean to, I don't mean to corral you right into that if you had other things you wanted to- No, I'll, I'll do a little spiel before that, then we'll look at this. Okay. You know, 4739, Exhibit 2. There we go. Back in 2007, we had four maxi pumpers and two mini pumpers. And they were really, really old, 23-years-old, too old, and a lot of risk associated with that. We finally, after lots of talk, lots of conversation, lots of analysis, decided that the smart thing to do was to buy a new pumper, maxi pumper, once every five years. They have a better 20-year useful life. And so you want to, you want them all staggered out. That way, they're not all maturing at the same time, and when they have problems, you know, you really are increasing your risk significantly. So, at the time, back in '07, we, the council approved back in November of '07 to dedicate some property tax, 1.65% of the property tax levy. And they told me to go ahead and make up the difference of this annual sinking fund, funding stream, make up the difference with investment interest. Well, I'm getting nothing on investment interest right now. I mean, you know, hardly anything, 0.2%, and I haven't been able to contribute. There's this laddered prioritized order of what, where the investment interest goes to. I haven't had enough interest to distribute to this fire apparatus sinking fund reserve. And so it's underfunded, okay? And that's an issue I teed up to the council briefly back in March at your CIP kickoff. It's, I said about $100,000. I've since skinny that number down to about $90,000 a year of additional funding that's needed. That's a separate issue that we'll tee up again as part of your CIP preview process. What was agreed back in '07, like I mentioned before, is replacing an apparatus once every five years. It's now 2012. We had planned on ordering it this year, and there's usually about seven, sometimes as much as nine months turnaround time to go. It's a custom build job. And so it takes us a while once you order it. The mistake I made, I noted in the agenda bill, is in the budget policy, I said, yeah, we're gonna order it, but I didn't budget anything, any money for the expenditure, because in my head, I was thinking, we don't receive it 2013, you don't pay for it till you receive it, right? Well, what I did not foresee, back when I broke the budget, is that investment rates would be, continue to be super low right now, and the manufacturer offers a 4.3 percent discount if you prepay this thing upfront. This is a no-grainer. We want to get that discount, we're already getting a discount on top of that or before that, by piggybacking on top of what's called the Houston Galveston Area Council's interlocal contract. And we've kind of pre-negotiated prices with the manufacturer. And so that's also saving us another 4 to 5 percent. And so you add it all up together, it's 8 to 10 percent savings on the fire truck. And so, I apologize, I don't like to bring ordinances to you that normally would do kind of a, two readings, and this is a first and final review, is what's recommended. I only have a 30-day wait lock. I've been, had to shoehorn this whole little purchase into a very tight schedule, and I just ran out of time to get it to you sooner, is the bottom line. I checked with our equipment leasing vendor to see if rates have dropped by any chance since the market has took a big downturn. They have not dropped. And so, the rate of 2.48 percent for a 10-year lease is killer good. It's, I can't do better than that anywhere. And I looked at various options, that was the best. We're using the same equipment leasing vendor, he was the low bidder, as we did five years ago. We purchased two maxi pumpers and one mini pumper. And with that background, let's turn to the little schedule here on Exhibit 2. So, I've tried to color-code this, and so, from 2012, look at that column, and we're talking about maxi pumpers only, maxi pumpers only. So we have the two ones, the two pumpers we purchased, those seven which are now five years old as of this year. Then down from that are two used pumpers. One pumper that we purchased back in '09, we bought it from Eastside Fire and Rescue, it's now 19 years old, okay? And then the next one is this shared pumper. It's also, it's owned, not by us, but by Eastside Fire and Rescue. We invested a little bit of money in terms of, so our hoses can work and whatnot, and we actually have it on-site. It's in our fire station. And, but it's ultimately owned by Eastside Fire and Rescue, and that, this actually came about as a result of Councilmember Stro asking a really good question. Do you really need two backup pumpers? And it was decided, as the plan evolved, to let's purchase one used pumper as a backup, and let's do a shared apparatus to save some money as a backup. And so that's what we've done. So technically, we still have four pumpers, we have two backups, but we're doing it on, financially, it's a relatively cheap way to go. We're still transitioning to a true three-pumper model, maxi pumper model. It doesn't happen until 2017. And that's where it gets a little confusing, so let me explain. Looking at the 2017 column, you'll see in yellow, one of the new maxi pumpers purchased back in '07 is now 10 years old in 2017. And then the used pumper we purchased in '09 is now 24 years, or will be 24 years old in 17. We're saying we would sell those at those points in time, in 2017. And you're saying, well, why would we sell the pumper that's 10 years old? We don't want to, but it's the nature of getting to this once every five-year cycle. We had to purchase two new pumpers in '07 to be our two new frontline units. We had no choice, we had to do that. That was the smart thing to do. And so as a result, those two age together. And so, there's this little transition where we have this one year, 2017, where it's only 10 years old, and then thereafter, we won't sell the pumper until it's 15 years old, which, by the way, is kind of the optimum time to sell something, sort of like a used car. You don't wait till it's dead, you wait, you still have, you want some useful life on it, and it's kind of a perfect spot, relatively speaking, where when you look at the depreciation on the apparatus and when you want to sell it, 15 years is about right. It's a really good time to sell it. So, when you look at 2017, what you'll see is, the three apparatus are the, the one that's 10 years old, up at the top there, that still would be in play, the ones in yellow would be sold off in 2017. Then we'd have the one that was purchased back in 2012, that's now, would be five years old in 2017. Then you have the new one purchased in 2017. So truly, three apparatus, only one would serve as a backup at that point. I thoroughly confused you.
So, questions? Thank you for that. Did you have more presentation you wanted to do, or should we launch questions?
Just launching questions.
Okay. So, I'm gonna ask a little bit about this, but Debbie, why don't you go first? I'll hold mine until...
Mine is just making sure that I understand some of the math here.
Sure.
I like your graph. Thank you. You mentioned that the, the life expectancy of a pumper is 20 years, and then we're selling it off after 15? Is that correct? Okay, because I was trying to figure out why we were buying one every five years instead of every seven years, but I'm gathering that we're selling it off for the last five of its expectancy.
There's an answer to that. Steve, did you want to tackle that?
For the record, Steve Heitman, deputy fire chief. Typically, it's recommended by the NFPA that you do not keep an apparatus more than 10 years on the frontline, and then they recommend about five years, five to 10 in a backup, so you can keep it up to 20 years. One of the issues that we ran into was, when we sold our old pumpers that originally cost a lot of money, the best we got was $4,500 for a pumper, and they were 24 years old. 20 years is when everybody says, ooh, yeah, we don't really want that. But at 15, you can still get a marketable amount out of about $50,000 to $75,000. And so that's one of the reasons we're looking at that.
I've got it, because I was just trying to think why we were buying them every five years instead of every seven, but if we're essentially selling them at 75 percent of their life expectancy, I'm good. Thanks.
And I'll ask my question here, because it's kind of the same question, and that is that, of course, you end up at this curve, and Chip, we talked about this earlier, where you, it's just like the new car, you lose a lot of your value in the first few years, and once that new car smell's gone, that new fire truck smell's gone, you know, you, things start to level out.
It's special spray.
But at some point, the logic in my household has always been, once it's worth nothing, you might as well run it as long as you can, because it's a whole lot cheaper to have five years of something that's not worth very much going to, not worth anything at all, versus something new going from worth a lot to worth a little. And at the same time, I balance that in my own mind against your, clearly, we don't want to be saddling our firefighters with 23-year-old equipment that isn't serving your needs and therefore isn't serving our needs. So I, I'm wondering where the balance is between those, those two competing, you know, forces.
Well, with that, each one of those will serve as a frontline apparatus for 10 years. It'll come in and we put it into Station 91 for the first five years, which is our busiest station, sees the most action, goes to Bellevue the most often. And then we move it down, we rotate it down to Station 92. Station 92 then becomes that reserve apparatus. And the thing to remember with these is that we don't fire them up and accelerate at a constant rate and, you know, save gas mileage. We fire them up and we hit it and we go. And so it puts a lot of wear and tear on these apparatus. And one thing we learned with our last fleet was maintenance costs start to skyrocket. We basically stayed with a four-model fleet because we were using the two backups for parts for the other ones when they broke down, or we had something so that we constantly were doing a leapfrog with that. And so, the maintenance does become an issue over time with that.
Steve, don't I remember, with the old fleet, probably 20-plus years, there was a point at which you guys were going up to First Hill, and it blew out either the transmission or the engine on the hill.
They lost, they lost the brakes coming down 24.
Oh!
And made the corner without tipping it over.
So, unlike our own personal automobiles, the reliability of a fire truck is, it just has to be. You can't go in with...
Lots of maintenance. And even with the new ones, as we currently have going on, we're lucky that we have that shared apparatus with Eastside, because right now, we have our reserve apparatus on the frontline. Because even one of our new pumpers, for some reason, that we are now the talk of Pearson Waterous pumps, the, they had a catastrophic failure in the transmission mounts. They snapped. Fortunately for us, one of our guys heard a funny noise and talked to his officer about it, and they both listened and said, yeah, something's up with that. We talked to the mechanic, he drove it and listened to it, said, yeah, I think it might be the slip joint on your drive line. And while he and the other mechanic were driving around, the pump transmission literally fell off the rig while they were driving. So even with the new ones, you just never know, because we go. Now, the good news is, it's covered, covered under warranty. There was no damage to the pump from that issue, so we do have that going for us.
Thank you.
Let me just add something. It's worth noting, this 15-year, kind of every-five-year cycle and selling it at 15 years, this is not the, there are other agencies out there, and Steve can speak to this, who, they're getting rid of their, their pumpers after 10 years or 12 years. 15 years is, would you call that the average?
I would say it's the average.
Yeah, the average. This is not, you know, it's the Honda Court approach. You know us, we're not here to try to do a BMW 7 Series Honda Court approach in everything we do. That's what this is. It's just trying to manage risk a little bit better.
So what was our equivalent when we went 23 years?
Do you remember, do you remember the rest of that MIU shirt? Remember the MC Pacer? The ugliest fishbowl on the earth? Did you have one?
Okay, Mike?
Steve, to my chagrin, when I was away at the last meeting, there was an approval of a fireworks permit. And I didn't get the opportunity to give my annual speech. I'm not gonna do it now. As I was gonna say, I would have voted no. But given that, you know, we're kind of status quo in terms of community practices, et cetera, does this suite of vehicles meet your need? And, you know, I mean that not from a cost-effective perspective, so Chip, don't answer this question, but from the public's sake perspective, because, you know, that's really our number-one job as Mr. Drinky.
They do. They definitely meet our needs for what, for the resources that we have. You know, again, with anything, any large event, we rely heavily on Bellevue or Seattle, or now Kirkland and even Eastside, because we're going to a larger mutual aid pool with more common their dispatching. But yes, they do meet our needs.
Well, now, it's gonna be, the second part of my question is, you know, I appreciate the cooperation with those surrounding communities, but, you know, there's a reason why we fed the rail near St. Monica's. So if we have a catastrophic failure and we can't rely on our cooperative neighbors, is this suite that we have sufficient to meet, you know, the needs of the public in an event like an earthquake, for instance?
We'll do the best we can with the resources we have.
I know, that was a tough question.
Okay, thank you. Mike, you're up.
Well, as I think, I hope everyone knows, I think fire and police are public, are public safety, and that's our primary responsibility, certainly a priority of government. But that, nobody gets a free lunch card. And I've got some questions here that I don't quite understand. The way the shared maxi is being presented, is the shared maxi, that you have the shared maxi, it doesn't have to be on your premises, that we still have access to the shared maxi? So when you say, and this I don't quite understand, when you say it's going away in 2012, are you saying the shared maxi program is going away, or you're just saying the shared maxi is, is going to a different station?
I don't even know if it'll go to a different station. The program itself is not going away. Right now, Eastside Fire does not have enough room to store all of their pumpers, and so that's why we're storing it at our house. We'll still have access to it no matter where it is.
Okay, so we're not going to a pure three-truck rotation?
At some point, we will, that we only own three of them. And what it does is, we put $1,500 a year into having access to that pumper if we need it.
Well, right. I mean, that's, we do not have a pure three-truck rotation. We have...
We have a three-truck rotation plus a shared, access to a shared pumper. And the answer to that is, yes.
Yes, currently. Yes, currently.
And we will. I mean, that's the agreement.
Yes.
That's, that's the long-term agreement.
Yes.
Okay. So, for that reason, you have, you have four maxis. As far as I'm concerned, when I look at your fleet, you have four maxis, and you have a four-truck rotation. And for that reason, I don't, I don't subscribe, or maybe I should suggest to the council this way, that in a future agenda, I would like to see a better, not a better, a, an analysis of going to, instead of the five-truck, a five-year rotation, a seven or a six-year rotation, given that you can go from 15 to 20 years on one of these trucks. And given, you know, when I just do the back of the napkin, you know, you get $50,000 for a 15-year truck, well, 15-year, a truck costs $600,000, $700,000, you know, that's $40,000, $30,000. So you're comparing $50,000 to five times, five years, five additional years, times $30,000, that's $150,000. I see a mixed map. I don't see the good cost analysis there. Okay, so what I'm asking, what I'm asking, I'd like to be clear with the council, is, you know, I'm all for this to get back onto the rotation, but I was a little uncomfortable with the way the shared maxi was presented. We still have the shared maxi as a backup. And as a result, we can, we can assume, I'm comfortable with assuming, risk of that fourth or that third truck being older than 15 years, and as a result, we're able to take advantage of having a six-and-a-half or a seven-year rotation instead of a five-year rotation. Because I, like the mayor, you know, when I'm ready for a new car or a truck, I don't get any, I call the kidney foundation, they haul it away from me. It dies.
So, Mike, you're, I think we're, we're at the point where we're making the segue from questions to the next step, which is debate. And you've sort of done that. Is there anybody else who has questions before we really...
Well, let me, let me ask, I want to give Chief Heitman the opportunity. Do you want to clarify the shared maxi arrangement that we have?
Clarify in what way, counsel?
Well, the shared maxi, we don't have a three-truck rotation, we have a four-truck rotation.
We don't own the fourth truck, but again, and if this eases your concern, it's a good thing that we don't, because we've had to put that apparatus into service recently because one of our newer, because that pump failure I described earlier. So for a month, anytime we needed that third apparatus, we've utilized that rig. So that's what it gives us access to, yes, a fourth pumper, but we have no ownership in that, other than we're basically membership in an organization.
Well, you, I mean, you don't, I'm not concerned about ownership. You have access to it. You have a, you have a percentage ownership, if you will.
Mike, is it a question?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get from the chief.
Even, even that.
I think it's a key, I think there's a very key point.
I think you're, you're on an interesting point, I just want to, let's keep it.
I think we have, I think we have said that we have access to four pumpers. Three we own, one we share.
We do.
Can I ask a question?
And one, one last sticking point on that is, since we don't own the fourth pumper at this time, part of that contract says that Eastside can call us, and within two hours, we'll have it, ready for them to take into service. So we don't always have access to that, even if we're utilizing it as our first-out pumper. If they need it, they have access to it.
Well, you'd never use it as your first-out pumper.
We would if we had two engines that went down.
Well, I mean, but we're giving you...
And even if it went down for a day.
We have, we have an operational question here. I mean, we are, we do not, we do not, we go for the top of the line. I mean, we get, we go for the top of the line when we buy equipment for you all. No problem with that. But top of the line implies reliability, and, you know, when you've got your, your two frontline trucks at five and 10 years old...
Mike's just turning into a question?
That wasn't turning into a question.
I think we'll actually get to where you're, I think you're going here in a minute.
I have a question that may elucidate what Mike is trying to find out. Since we don't own that shared pumper, presumably, we don't know how old it is. I mean, is it on a rotation tube?
Actually, it is, and Eastside's ready to sell it at any time. It's the same age as the one, it's the twin of the one that we purchased from them a little over two years.
You see the number in oranges?
Right, but then another truck is gonna come and backfill that.
A new one, then.
Another truck will backfill that.
But part of the agreement is, depending on who owns that truck, Eastside isn't necessarily always going to supply that apparatus.
Yeah, I know, and that is because that fourth truck is so, it's so infrequently that you'll use that fourth truck, that it only makes sense to share.
It is, it is an insurance policy.
Yeah, it only makes sense to share. So in, in effect, you have a four-truck option, and that fourth truck is excess capacity that you're sharing with the other.
I think he meant to say, is it not, on the end of that? I think he meant to say, is it not, on the end of that?
I would like, I would like to give the director, Mr. Mayor, I would like to give the director an opportunity to speak.
Okay, let's give Debbie a shot.
Well, she'll have her time. Let me, I've got it.
There was a really good question in a statement that I'd like to address.
Again, by Councilmember Zero.
Yes, by Councilmember Zero. For the record.
Let the minutes reflect. And I know exactly what you're about to say, so let me tee up-
You sure you know?
I'm quite sure I know where this is going. All Mike is trying to do, and I think he kind of got off on an unusual track, I think all he's trying to do is make an argument, a rationale for risk management, that because we have access to a fourth pumper, we can manage our risk a little bit more liberally over time, and probably get a little more life out of our other pumppers. And I think, if I know where you're going, in fact, earlier today, you said, that's something that we can look at. It's the sixth year. That's where Mike's going.
The sixth year?
Yes.
Yeah, that's where, I've already asked the question. Others have already asked the question.
That's all this goes down.
The short, meaning, can't we have the, go in a six-year rotational cycle instead of a five-year? When you had a true four-pumper model, which we still have right now, once every five years, based on 20-year life, that makes sense, right? So if you really are transitioning to a three-pumper model, that's the direction we're going, then why not make it, you know, one-third of 20 is roughly six years, make it about six or six and a bit years? All that, Steve Heidman talked to that, but the answer I got was not ready to say, yes, we can do that yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. Now, this whole model, this whole model, it's in flux, and it's in flux in the right direction. And this notion of, right now, it's just us and Eastside Fire and Rescue sharing apparatus. We want to expand it. In theory, you get a whole bunch of agencies, okay, we can cut down the number of apparatus if we can get agreements about sharing of apparatus. But that, that's not a quick conversation. That takes a period of, really, some years, quite honestly, to work your way through. So they're working on that. But this notion of, as we moved to the three-pumper model in 2017, they are comfortable with that, and they will be looking between now and then, and about this going to a six-year replacement cycle. And so you could, you sell it 18 years rather than 15 years.
Was that, did I anticipate you right?
Thank you.
Okay, still on questions, Debbie, and then Mike.
I think, to me, what is it? It does turn into some degree of risk mitigation. I think when we're talking about public safety, everybody wants to be extremely conscious that these are people's lives, not only the residents, but obviously the firefighters involved. I can only imagine, no, I cannot even imagine what it was like to go down 24th and have the brakes go out. But to my question, is, when we start to go through this and look at extending, you know, to six years, six times three, turning into 18, et cetera, would be to have, not detailed, but a generally solid understanding of what the maintenance and the maintenance risk costs are. Because, you know, you talk about the last five years of your car, well, you don't know what it's going to cost to suddenly have to replace the, well, you do know. Again, I'm answering my own questions. It's very expensive to suddenly have to do substantial repair. Had you gotten rid of the car of the year earlier, would you have been in a better situation? So when we go into this, I want to look at that risk component, but I also want to look at an understanding of what the potential maintenance implications are. My final question would be, on the shared pumper, how, what does happen? Let's say, you know, something on it blows up, we're paying the $1,500, do we suddenly then get handed a bill for the repair, or do we have an insurance policy on it? How's that work out?
According to the agreement, if it's shown that we were negligent, we're on the hook. If not, if it's normal wear and tear, then Eastside is responsible for it as the owners of that apparatus.
Okay, thanks.
Mike?
Just a comment that, Mr., that's going to turn into a question. It was interesting that Mr. Zero was being very liberal with his risk assessment, and I'm going to be now very conservative. And it gets back to the issue, deputy, of what risk are you managing towards? So what's the worst-case scenario? And if, in fact, we're looking to share more apparatus with our neighbors, does that include any marine component, so that we'd be able to access Mercer Island in the event of an earthquake, for instance? Because I have to ask this. I'm a geologist, procrain outlaw.
To the best of my knowledge, it does not include a marine component, unless the chief has something he can expand on that. None of the other fire departments, other than they have swift water out at Eastside. So, and Duval has that as well for the river rescues. And we can access those resources if we need to, but I would imagine that if we're having issues, they're going to be having those same issues.
Well, maybe to be more specific, so I understand in terms of EMT and other types of responses, but in addition to that, if we're looking at continuing to share fire apparatus, does, is there a way that we can fold in sometime in the future, a marine component that would be able to abate fires in the event of an earthquake?
Talking about pumping out of the-
Absolutely.
I think we actually do have pumping capability.
There is a monitor, it is a pump on the marine patrol boat.
But it's not just the pumping, it's the, it's the facility, or it's the boat that's able to come to Mercer Island and put out a fire, for instance?
It can, only if it's onshore. Especially with the new setbacks, the houses are a little farther away. We do have the ability, though-
We just talked about that a little while ago.
We do have the ability, though, to draft directly from the lake, if we have the access point.
Yeah, I understand that.
So we have that capability, as long as all of our equipment's up and running.
Well, and see, that's the issue, is, you know, how do we get the equipment here? So if we only have three, if we're going to the liberal model, and we only have three, and we have a significant earthquake, how do we get that fourth, but in a marine component? Is there anything out there on the market now, you know, from Chicago or anywhere else?
I'm going to go out on a limb here, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're in an earthquake where we need more firefighting capability than we have on the island, and the bridges are down, it might take more than a few hours, but we will request and we will receive firefighting capabilities. It'll come by barge, it'll come by helicopter, we will get the resource. It will come, and we have the relationships in place to make sure that happens. Am I right? Does it-
Yes, you are correct. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, we'll have a helicopter with a drop bucket during earthquake drill.
All the stuff's in place, pre-arranged relationships, what's the name of the, hm? Garner, it's a national company that does exactly this stuff. Private corporation that brings in resources from all around the country.
Right.
Because they know that a jurisdiction like Mercer Island can't go ask Renton, because Renton's already got everything committed. So this, they come in from all over the country.
Okay, so similar to the earlier discussion on the shoreline piece, when we get to this further discussion about, you know, what does a suite of vehicles look like, chief, would you, this is a question, would you make sure that we tee that issue up in terms of having an earthquake, not being able to have four apparatus on Mercer Island, but having some legal compact in place that we can all review, be that a helicopter, or a barge, or whatever it is? But I would like to see that.
Sure. It's our mutual aid and our Garner agreements.
Correct.
Produces all of those capabilities, and we can show that to you.
Good.
Thank you very much. Okay, Donna?
Looking at the extensive analysis that you guys did in 2007 with the different, with the fleet, I'm wondering where the kind of EMT, the medical units are, and if they're, if they're in a similar rotation, or if that's, how that's handled?
They are in a similar rotation. As a matter of fact, we just took delivery of a new aid car this year, and they rotate every five years on the same philosophy.
And how many of those do we have?
We have three.
Three, and rotate every five? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Jenna?
Yeah, it seems like, you know, when we talk about risk management, the shared maxi seems all the more important, as more jurisdictions perhaps will get into the grouping. And presumably, this 19-year-old vehicle will be replaced with a new one very soon. I don't know. I'm wondering, is it the members of that group that decide which, what kind of vehicle and when to purchase it? You know, how does that work with the group?
With the interlocal agreement with Eastside and Paul City is also, I think they're District 45, if I remember right. The, we have at least an annual meeting every year, and that's when it's decided on the apparatus that's already in there, if it's going to stay in there, if the owner needs to sell it or wants to sell it, if somebody else has one that they can rotate in that might be a little more newer, a little more reliable. So that decision is made at that time by the representatives.
But is it actually owned by the group?
No, it is not. It is still owned by the department that owns it.
By the department, oh.
And the other two members of the group pay in the $1,500 to take care of maintenance. Basically, maintenance fees, that sort of thing. And then, again, if there's a catastrophic failure, you were negligent, and you're responsible for that.
We've talked about, we've kicked around the idea-
About the shares.
If you can get more jurisdictions and get this thing bigger, you eventually get to a point where you might want to set up a model where it is owned by a new entity that gets created, interlocal agreement entity.
That's what I thought.
And it may, it may morph into that. Right now, it's, we're so small and experimental on this with just a couple of agencies, we haven't gone that far.
Yeah, it seems like that would get more and more important if-
We do have a number of agencies that are looking at it and are interested, and that's what we're exploring, is to move on to something else that will be the next evolution of this. And so that is definitely a possibility, that they, we would form that entity, they would become, same day, but they would become the owners of those apparatuses. Because if you look throughout our zone, there's 14 fire departments, which means there's at least 14 extra apparatus out there, because everyone has at least one backup. If we could take that pool and take it down to maybe there's eight, that whenever you needed one, you called somebody and had it to your facility within the hour, that would make a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, question, still sort of drilling down on this one, and I guess this is just for clarification at this point. So in Exhibit 2, what's up here down at the bottom, it does say, removing the shared pumper from service in 2012. Yet the conversation we've had has been around continuing the interlocal agreement into the indefinite future and having the piece of equipment remain available. I'm just curious, can you tell me where you end up landing after this conversation, or what I should expect? Is the, is the orange box really moving over to 2017, and your expectation at this point is, or is it going away?
Steve, I think the question is, is the shared pumper going away in 2012, or will we have access to one?
Because the agenda bill says it is, yet what I heard, what I heard is that it's not.
That particular apparatus is going away, but the ILA will still be in place. And the possibility is, the one that we own, that is of that same age, but that we refurbished, may slide into that spot.
But the question, changing the serial number, in essence, rather than the availability? So there will still be a shared apparatus, it just won't be that?
It will be the exact same one, yes.
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused. So on my, on my, so in the box that says 24 years old, up there, the yellow box at the top, would actually, it's that machine, but it becomes sort of gold in the sense that it's now a shared apparatus with-
Correct.
Eastside? Okay.
And that's, that's just one possibility. Eastside has not spoken whether or not they may have a newer apparatus that they're ready to slide into that spot. And if they do, then we'll sell the current one that we have in our Engine 93 spot.
Okay. All right, someone else had a question here, I think?
Moving away from the fire department, on to the budgeting aspect of this, can you just clarify, so by moving up the purchasing of, or the leasing, lease-to-purchase of this pumper truck, or this maxi, is, are there budget implications, or is this, in terms of, this is existing money that we were planning to spend in 2013, but now we're spending in 2012? Is that, again, are there budget implications to our current budget? Is this something that, you know, what's the bottom line in terms of that?
Yes, and the way I view it, we're not really moving it up, but I guess it's always planned. It's just a matter of when we're actually going to pay the manufacturer, in this year or next year. In any case, yes, there are budget implications. When I bring the second quarter financial status report to the council in your first meeting in September, I would include a budget adjustment that accomplishes just really one thing. It recognizes the lease proceeds, okay? The debt proceeds we're going to use to pay Pierce Manufacturing, the manufacturer of the fire truck, for the vehicle. And then the annual lease payments for 10 years don't begin until June 1st of next year. And we will fold that directly into the 2013, 2014 budget.
And Chip, will any program, service, or project be done differently or timed differently as a result of this? That's the other way of asking the question of, is there a budget issue?
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no impact, there's no domino effect.
Okay, other questions? No? Thank you. Okay, so we are open for a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with the Houston-Gallison area council, permitting the purchase of a fire truck under the terms of previous bid from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc.
Discussion. Mike?
I'd just like to compliment the firehouse, the chief, deputy chief, about making this going from a four-truck rotation to a quasi-three-truck rotation. Although, I don't quite understand, and this, you know, it doesn't happen until 2017 or so, I don't quite understand why we can't in-house really extend that five-year rotation to a six- or seven-year rotation. I'm not, I don't understand why that's not in-house, and why we have to consult with the other firehouses around. But that's ways down the road. Certainly, I'll support this. No, I mean-
Any other comments? Okay, well, so the comment I would make, Mike, I had the same thought as I looked at this. How do you, you know, is the, is the expense the right expense and the sequence the right sequence? But I realized in looking, and it's this chart that helped me to get there, was, if you look at the year 2012, it's obvious that we have, it's reasonable to make the decision to buy a piece of equipment now. I have no problem with that. I think the place where there's a question is, as we get out to 2017.
Absolutely.
What's the right decision to make then? And I think there's clearly some room for latitude at that point, and more input from the fire department on how equipment's doing and maintenance costs will factor into that. So it's a question for a different council than this council, but for tonight, I'm very comfortable proceeding with the purchase as it's been.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, it will still be this council to make that decision.
Okay, other comments? That's an interesting assumption. Mike, did you have something you want to say?
Well, you know, I have to be the conservative on this, because, you know, to what extent Gifford Pincha, when he established the Forest Service, identified the need for fire suppression and getting people out there into the forest, we need to be the same stewards for Mercer Island. I'm not at all comfortable with more sharing of apparatus across the landscape, given that we have a very distinct possibility for a significant impact on Mercer Island if there's an earthquake. And under those circumstances, we can't rely on our neighbors. So we will have to be self-dependent, which is why, you know, I pushed so hard to get that well-drilled by Santa Monica, or Santa Monica, I was thinking of Fat Zone, by St. Monica. So I will continue to push for the five-year rotation for that very reason, off into the future. And also to look at ways that we can deploy waterborne resources to come to the aid of Mercer Island, and that's well-understood with our neighbors, so. But thank you for all your work on this. I know you put a lot of work into this book, you, Chip, and Steve. Appreciate it.
Donna?
Similarly, I just wanted to kind of thank the staff and the council from 2007 to initiate, initiating this staggered infrastructure approach, because I think that's a really important step, especially for our island, that was kind of built up all at one time, and to have a lot of infrastructure needs come in a kind of balloon payment, or a balloon repair, or redo at the same time is onerous. And so to have this staggered approach, there's a lot of foresight, and just want to kind of applaud that look down the line for the long term on how to help balance our books in a better way. So, thank you.
Okay, with that-
I move to-
You already did. I flew out of the second. I think it's just for me to call for a vote. So all those- So all those, no, I got to do it the other order. Motion is to authorize the city manager to execute the interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with the Houston-Gallison area council, permitting the purchase of a fire truck under the terms of a previous bid from Pierce Manufacturing, Inc. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, very good. On, yes, we have, we're a third of the way done on this.
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the contract between the city of Mercer Island and Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., for one Velocity Pumper Fire Truck for a total cost, including all applicable discounts and sales tax, of $619,546.50.
Don't forget that 50 cents. Okay, I think Mike got a second on that. And discussion on this. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, curious.
I move to suspend City Council Rules of Procedure 5.2 and adopt Ordinance Number 12-03, which approves a master lease agreement with Municipal Asset Management, Inc., to finance the acquisition of a Velocity Pumper Fire Truck.
Discussion. All the, oh, thank you. You gotta yell. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Mike, that was a first for you. Wow. Don't see a whip in. All right, we are done with regular business, moving on to other business, council member absences. Would anybody like to move to excuse Councilmember Grous?
I would like to move to excuse Councilmember Grous from tonight's meeting.
Who I understand is in.
Paris.
Is he in Paris? No, it was Italy, wasn't it?
It was in, I got a Buongiorno on Sunday morning, so it was, he's in Italy right now, or yesterday.
It's a rough life. And Mike, did you offer a second for that? Somebody offered a second. I didn't mean to put words in your mouth.
Don't.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? No? Okay, passes. Upcoming absences, any, that we are yet unaware of.
Listed on your planning schedule at the end, so Cyril on the 16th and 18th, July 2nd, Bassett and Grady, and August 6th, anything other than that?
All right, planning schedule.
Rich, you have a revised planning schedule in front of you from what was in the packet. I had, after we had sent out the packet, there were some adjustments I needed to make, and then there's an important question to ask you. But the key change was the Planning Commission's request to spend some more time on the 60/40 and no-net-loss work. I think that's going to take a good part of the summer, and you'll get it, I think I've shown it for September as your first reading. That had been scheduled for July 2nd. If you focus right now on July 2nd, you'll see we have two proclamations and the Open Space Conservancy Trust work plan, study session with the I-90 folks. I don't have a commitment from the DOT yet that they can make that date. I also gave them a September study session option. So, right now, we don't have much of a meeting on July 2nd, and frankly, there really isn't anything I can move into that slot. We also have council members, we have Bassett and Grady both already scheduled not to be there, so it begs the question.
You're referring to female majority, aren't you?
Would you like to? I think.
That's my point.
Channeling Deputy Mayor Grous, he would say, let's have a meeting because he gets to be in charge of that. And about the only thing that I could conceive when we move into that would be Kirsten was going to bring a report on the peak agreement monitoring. I haven't asked her whether or not she can actually pull it together, but I suspect she can, but I really would prefer not to ask Kirsten, as you can imagine, she has, she's been actually been doing two jobs now for over a month, and after the month, the three months that she's had before that, personally, that's kind of a lot to ask. So I'd rather not, really, there's nothing else we can put on July 2nd, everything else is dependent on something else.
So the question is, would you like to have a meeting? Or not? And I think the recommendation is skip it, and ties in with the Fourth of July holiday if people wanted to have that. Comments?
Okay. I will.
We'll scratch that meeting.
The proclamation will still be at our next meeting on June 18th. I'll get the state organized for the September meeting and the trust work plan, the liaison is, and I believe we could probably do that on the 18th. If not, we'll move it to the 16th of July.
I think it would probably, it will be done on 18th.
Yeah.
The only issue with that is that the chair may not be able to make it, to present the report, but we'll work with staff on that.
All right.
Very good. No other major changes, which, you don't show us readdressing the Shoreline Esch program until November. Yeah, we need to talk about that. Can we just leave it for right now, and I'll talk to you offline as to why that's important?
Well, or, why don't we talk about, can we talk about it over retreat?
Yes. Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Other, Mike, you got?
I have a couple of questions, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Rich, regional animal control on June 18th?
Yes.
Why are we going over that?
Well, as you remember, the last time you had it, you did a, it was the second opportunity to indicate to the county your preference to stay with the county's animal control system, but it wasn't a commitment. This next one will be the commitment. So it's like a three-step process the county has been going through because they're trying to find out which cities are actually going to be in the countywide system or not. People are all making their determinations right now. The big one that we've been waiting for is the city of Bellevue, and the Bellevue council last week indicated their intent to stay with the county's system. Kirkland has also changed its mind and will be going with the county's system. So the thing is actually gelling, and our recommendation will be that we follow suit and that we stay with them.
Another question I have is on the July 16th peak agreement. I'm hoping that that's going to be a report that looks at all the agreements.
Sure, it is. Yeah, that's the intent. The settlement of a lawsuit, the, it's all agreements that the city was either a party to or responsible for monitoring.
When I say all agreements, I mean all agreements, and this is my logic on that, is because the city, the people, put a million dollars into that whole system.
Yes.
Into all the agreements through, whether the agreement had to do with the city or not, and you know where I'm going with that. So that's, when I say all agreements, I mean all agreements, whether the city was involved, whether the city had leverage or influence regardless.
Yes, I think we'll get to where you're talking about, but one thing that I can't, I won't have access to all the data, probably get most of it, is the agreements between the Boys and Girls Club and the school district, in their land deal. But almost every agreement, the city, even if it wasn't a party to, we had a monitoring responsibility. So I think you'll get just about everything. There's CIPA, and there were requirements under that, there was.
Well, without being behind the bush, I'm most concerned about the, the East Seattle site.
Oh, we can tell you quite a bit about that, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I'm particularly interested in the charging station at the Boys and Girls Club, and that's getting a lot of use, by the way.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Oh, planning session, planning schedule.
Yeah, I just had a question, the survey results, do we have?
It's not on here.
It probably should be. June 26th, Ally. The council will be invited, it's actually a school board retreat, June 26th at the community center, and the council was invited to hear the presentation of the survey results, so.
This is the school district survey.
Yeah, I'm also wondering about our survey.
Oh, our survey won't even be conducted until later in the summer.
Is that the decision?
Yes.
Okay, so we're waiting till late summer.
EMC did say that doing it close to the time of the school district would have an impact, or could have an impact, so I made the call, we're just going to wait. So we'll be a little later in the summer.
But we'll be okay then for our own budgeting and planning purposes?
Well enough, yes.
Anything else on the planning calendar? Okay, very good. We move on to board appointments, and whereas in the past we've had nothing to report, we have lots to report tonight. So, thank you to Ally and Tammy. Oh, congratulations to Tammy, by the way.
Yeah.
I don't remember the details, so I won't make the announcement here. Ally, maybe you can.
Sure, Tammy had her baby last Thursday at about 6:15 in the morning, seven pounds, nine ounces, named her Maggie Jean. I've only texted with her, and she says all is good, so I'm sure these first couple of weeks we'll just be hunkering down at home, but she said she'll try and bring the baby in at some point.
That'd be great. Well, send her our best, please. So with that, Tammy and Ally put together all the applications, the staff has reviewed the applications and offered their suggestions. I've reviewed them, I've had input from some of you, and out of that, I've arrived at my recommendations, which boringly enough aligned with the staff recommendation. So I'm not sure how we do this, in terms of, do I ask for a motion to approve?
To approve the mayor's recommended appointments.
Okay. So I would be looking for a motion of that sort.
Motion to approve the mayor's recommendations for the 2012 boards and commissions appointments.
Second?
Discussion.
It's wonderful to have so many citizens put their names in, and I know that there were a number of positions that had many applicants, and I hope that those people who are interested in serving and who were not appointed will come forward again and put their name in for either the same board or perhaps another one. But it's wonderful to have such community interest and participation.
Well said. Donna?
I second that, and just following up on that, Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to that point that we did have a lot of wonderful applicants, and half of the people that were on commissions or already in those positions have been reappointed. I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit to why that is, just broadly.
Yeah, thank you. And we talked a little bit about this earlier, and I said I would try and make that point coming in and then promptly forgot, so. You know, I think what I look at, and I know what staff looks at, is they try and figure out how to fill these positions, is we want new energy coming in, for sure, we want to bring citizens in and give them the opportunity to participate and hear, have their voices be heard, and we want to have some roster of people who have been there before and can be the glue that holds things together and teaches the new people how to move into that position. So it becomes a balancing act between keeping folks who have been on for some time and can teach the new folks the ropes, and bringing in the fresh folks to keep things moving forward. And that was the balancing act that staff tried to create, I think, with the recommendations they made and that I followed, so. With that, Debbie?
I'm just going to make one quick comment, and that, thank you for all the applicants, congratulations to the new appointees, but also a tremendous thanks to the people who are leaving some of these commissions and boards, because when you look at these names, you know, there's an incredible community wealth on this list, and while they may be leaving that board or commission, I'm certainly hoping that they're not going into any sort of quiet or semi-retirement phases. So tremendous thank you to everybody who has served, and we'll look forward to working with you in different ways, new ways, in the future.
Well said. Okay, anybody else? All right, with that, all in favor of accepting the mayor's slate of 2012 board and commission appointments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much for that. We move on to council member reports. Mike, Cyril, you want to start? Jane?
Just that the incredible work that has gone into the Sustainability Task Force is just amazing. I had such trepidation thinking, how can that group with such a small, short timeline and such a large group and so many areas to explore and research and talk about, how can we ever do it? And with the leadership of Kirsten Taylor and Don Cohen, and all the participation of all the members, we're wrapping up tomorrow night, the final recommendations, which will come to the council at the council retreat. So I think it's been a wonderful, for me, it's been personally wonderful because I just didn't think we'd be able to do it. And unfortunately, I'm going to have to miss tomorrow night when we wrap it all up. But I just have to congratulate the group for their hard work. It's wonderful.
Okay. Donna?
I echo Councilmember Brown's comments, that the amount of hours and time and dedication people have put in researching and analyzing different issues around sustainability has been extremely impressive, and want to publicly thank all of them and look forward to reading and hearing about the final recommendations.
Debbie?
Nothing to report on the commissions or boards, but I have to say that I personally am looking to retiring in confidence from any sort of public life in about 30 years based on the second graders that have been coming through sitting hard the last few weeks. I mean, I know a lot of us have had the chance, and I've had the chance to work with some of them, and already you just see some amazing thought processes and creativity and energy, and I have a whole stack here of letters of ideas from some of the second graders, and some of them I think are quite worthy. So I'll let y'all know, but just a big thank you to the teachers, the kids, the staff, everybody who was involved. It was just incredibly motivating.
Very good. I had a letter from a kid who, a bunch of letters, of course, and they're all very cute. One in particular loved being here and having, being able to spin in the chairs, so, you know, certain perks that come with this job. Mike?
Stan does quite a request for additional park and rec facilities.
One in particular has quite a lot.
So I'm curious to see how that develops. I wanted to make the same kind of, about the Sustainability Task Force, and I've since apologized to Don for my inability to attend many of those meetings for various reasons. Tangential to that, Rich was able to ensure that the city sponsored a meeting of a regional group called Puget Sound Energy Solutions last week. We continue to move as vigorously as we can on finding ways to not only deploy charging stations like we've done on Mercer Island, but also to work with the auto manufacturers in ensuring that they make the cars that are cost-effective, that people can buy, and then in turn can use the charging stations. So to that end, we were successful in getting the chief engineer from Mitsubishi here last week, who gave an excellent presentation that I'll send to you, Rich, and we can share with the council and anyone else. And really pointed out, add or about 2017, interestingly enough, the dynamics for meeting fuel standards, air quality standards, a number of other standards, particularly as it has been driven by the state of California and now by the Environmental Protection Agency, is going to be so acute that just about every auto manufacturer will have a fleet of electric cars or forms of plug-in electric cars that will be cost-effective for me, I hope, by then. And I mention that because, you know, a lot of congratulations go to those on the Sustainability Task Force and the mayor and others, who many years ago saw well in advance the need to access funding through Department of Energy and other sources, and to really be one of the leaders in the region for finding ways for us to transition from a fuel-based transportation economy to one that is based on, quite frankly, a much greener origin of power. And it couples with our interest in looking at green power and finding ways to push Puget Sound Energy on the remaining, less, remaining 15% to 30% of their portfolio. So I guess, you know, in the long run, there's a lot. So, I guess, you know, in the long run, there's a lot yet to do, but in the short term, we've done an awful lot in the region to make sure that Seattle is probably best poised than any other community in the country to take advantage of Ford, Mitsubishi, BMW, Volkswagen, and all the other auto manufacturers that are gonna come out with new types of vehicles over the next two to five years. So, thanks.
You want a second bite, Sharon? I don't know.
I've had it.
On kind of, I guess, a solemn note, I just wanted to, to propose something and, and, and mention that, of course, as we all probably are very familiar with, in Seattle there's been quite a spate of gun violence, and I just wanted to offer condolences to the families and communities that have been affected by that. And I was thinking about our own community too, and thinking about, it might be very valuable to citizens of Mercer Island to hear from our police chief, and possibly from our Youth and Family Services Director, about the opportunity, about what we're doing in our community, how people may want to feel, how they, if citizens are concerned, what they can do, or how, how we're responding. And I, and I bring in Youth and Family Services, because some of the mental ill- illness issues related to some of the shooters, and some of even their own families' comments, that they wish that they had brought forth their family member to professional mental, uh, mental health services previous to such devastating impacts for our broader community. And so I'm wondering, again, if there's some way that we can get the word out to help bolster people who are maybe, have a concern about a family member, and letting them know about resources that we have on the island, and again, kind of addressing some people's maybe fears going on, and, and I'm not sure what the best approach for that is, but wanted to kind of raise that issue.
Tana and I actually talked about this last week, and I urged her to bring it up tonight. If I sort of see nods of interest and support from the council, I'll, I'll ask Cindy and Ed to jointly author maybe a, a forum piece for the paper, and sort of use the pulpit that they have. I've always thought Cindy, in her role, has a great pulpit to talk about good choices for kids, and Ed, in, in his role about safety, and this seems to be an important kind of message that they can, they can collaborate on. I don't need a vote, I don't need anything more than if we did that kind of thing, you guys think that was a good thing for the community. All right, then, we'll, we'll work on that. Thanks for bringing that up.
Sounds good, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, back to me, let's see, I echo Sustainability Policy Task Force, it's been an exciting group, it's, it's been great to see the energy that's there, and to see everybody contributing as much as they have. I, I hope that what you see it, when you see it here, uh, on the planning session calendar, it's something that you all find exciting too. So, that's, that's a good thing. Green Power Challenge is ongoing. Reminder to everybody out there that it's something we're trying to ferment this year, there's a big shift in the community to more usage of green power, and I welcome anybody who wants to contact me about that, talk more about it, or any of the other members of the Green Ribbon Commission.
Do we know how we're doing on that? Have the households signed up, or businesses?
I don't have a, I don't have an up-to-date number, I'm afraid, so.
There, there's a map that's hanging in the hallway in City Hall, and it's the island, and it's filled up green to about the town center. How's that sound?
That's a good way to put it.
So showing, as I would say, maybe eighty-five percent?
Yeah, well, we, we put it in at where we started at the beginning of the year, and I don't know that it's been updated with, with, yeah, the, the numbers who have signed up this year, so. With that, I think I'm done. Oh yeah, you, thank you, you have an announcement?
Just a real quick heads up, the city staff tomorrow, don't expect to get a lot of things done that are normal-looking tomorrow. We're participating in the regional disaster drill. This is when we go into our National Incident Management System training, and it's a big deal. We do this at least once a year, and tomorrow is it. So I just want to let you know we're doing that, it's a little unusual. It also is a reminder, again, this is a conversation Tana and I had, we owe you a little, little piece on the council's role in, in a major disaster, and we're gonna get that to you, and we'll, we'll bring it either in a study session format, or in a council agenda. But show you what your role is and how that links into our role. It's, the, the MIMS process is, is very prescribed, we are required to use it, and it's a good system to use. And there is a role for the council, it's, it's mostly about reassuring your neighbors. And the mayor has a special role in helping to declare a disaster. But, and my suggestion would be give it to us in a binder that's got a nice, you know, red label or something on it, says, "Read Me," and, oh, we're gonna strap it to your ankles, and you'll be, or you'll be microchipped, so. Anyway, we'll, we'll get that for you, and, and maybe round out all the organizational pieces that we've had, and it might be a good informational thing for you guys.
Okay, with that, we are going to adjourn now to an executive session to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101B. And I've said approximately fifteen minutes, so let's try that and see how it goes, and then we will go longer if we have to.
We'll probably have to do at least one more.
Yeah. So, okay?
...
Well, I missed it.
Alright, we're extending the executive session for another fifteen minutes to nine forty-five.
Well, you can have your... One, two, three. Yeah. How are you doing over there? Yeah.
I was waiting on this place to stop. I am wondering. What I want. I'm sorry. I thought that was good. Good job.
So, um...
Let me, let me...
Come on!
Sorry.
I know we were ten more minutes. Nine fifty-five.
Sorry. Uh, so I, I want, I want...
Oh.
That, that is good.
(laughing) Thank you.
Que video?
Ah, there was language I have to... The time is right. So we've returned from the executive session. No decisions were reached. It's 9:54 something by the clock, and I am now adjourning the meeting.